Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, at seven P M. It is being broadcast from the Town Hall, ten Nickerson Avenue, the Selectman's Meeting Room, and held on Zoom. It is broadcast on both Comcast and Verizon, and you can also stream on MCAM's site. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have anything under unanticipated? Anyone from the audience have anything under unanticipated?
Madam Chair?
Uh, Ms. Fay, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. On the evening of March twenty ninth, during the communications section, the Board of Selectmen asked the attorney from K P Law to draft a letter and forward it on to Hometown America. My first question is, has that letter been drafted and was it forwarded on?
Um, Ms. Fay, could you just, do you remember exactly what it was in reference to with Hometown?
It was in regards to the Blake case, which is rent disparity. That same evening, Attorney Goodhart from Hometown, representing Hometown America, was taken.
Right. The letter was drafted, and what it, what it asked was what Hometown intended to do about this whole situation, and we have not received a reply from them yet.
So, can you give me some idea on when it was sent to Hometown at that point? Was it within the two days?
I don't, I don't, I'm not having it right in front of me, I can't tell you. Um, usually K P Law is pretty good. I imagine it went out, I would say, within a week to ten days, wouldn't you think, Bob?
Yes.
And I, I'm looking for some feedback at some point, either the next meeting, or you can send it to me electronically. We got it, because at this point, we're forty-nine days beyond the March twenty ninth meeting. So even if we take the ten days off, beyond that thirty days, so I'm looking for responses.
Absolutely. I'll have Colleen look at it tomorrow when she's in, and we'll see if we can locate exactly when it was sent. And again, I do not believe we've heard anything back from them, but if we have, we will let you know that as well.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else from the audience have anything under unanticipated?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I wanted to make a quick announcement. For this weekend, the Annual Rotary Cable Auction is happening on Saturday and Sunday. We're airing it on all three of our public education and government channels from four P M. to seven P M. And we'd just like everyone to tune in and bid. I know they haven't got as many items as they usually do, but they do have quite a bit. And they also have online bidding, where you can go to the Rotary's webpage. It's Middleborough with just the O, no O U J H, middlebarrotary dot com, and click on Auction Twenty Twenty One.
Great, thank you. It's a great event every year. Thanks for hosting it. Okay, anyone else from the board have anything under announcements and recognitions? Anyone from the audience have anything under announcements and recognitions? Hearing none, could I please get a motion to approve the minutes for five, ten, twenty twenty one?
One more, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. And could I please get a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or her designate assignment warrants for week ending five, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one?
One more. So move.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, up first, is that you on the phone, Jason? Okay, Jason Cox, if you're on, let me know and unmute yourself. Okay, I do not see him. We'll come back to that when he joins us. So I'm moving on to item B. Could I please get a motion to vote to award a Southeastern Regional Services Group contract with W B Mason, Inc. for fifty-seven point eight percent off the prices of office supplies and thirty point, thirty-two point eight percent off ink and toner cartridges for a two-year term commencing on July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
So move.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, any further, yes?
No, chair.
Go ahead, Bob.
Emily is in on the meeting, if there are any questions for these services contracts.
Okay, any comments or questions? Sounds like a good deal to me. Hearing none, all in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Passes unanimously. And could I please get a motion to vote to authorize a Southeastern Regional Services Group contract award for water sewer treatment chemicals to Borden and Remington, J C I Jones Chemical, Roberts Chemical, and env operations, environmental operations, I'm sure that is, for a one-year period commencing on July first, two thousand twenty-one through June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, with a total estimated value of five hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents?
So move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Okay, thank you. And could I please get a motion to vote to authorize a Southeastern Regional Service Group contract award for D P W Supplies to E J Company, John Holdley and Sons, T L Edwards, Inc., Safe Road Services, Dennis K Burke, Inc., and Peterson Oil Services for a one-year period commencing on July first, two thousand twenty-one through June twentieth, two thousand twenty-two? Is that June twentieth, or should it be June thirtieth, Colleen?
June thirtieth.
Okay, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, with a total estimated value of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and two cents?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. May I please get a vote to appoint a representative to the Serphead Commission for a one-year term? We have to do this every year. I have been serving on it. I would be happy to continue to serve if you so choose. So it's up to someone on the board unless someone else wants to do it.
Motion for Leilani?
Okay. I have a motion and a second, and I would accept that nomination. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Passes unanimously. And could I please get a motion to vote to approve and sign Amendment Number One to the Agreement for Engineering Services between the Town and Weston and Sampson for Mazara's Well Pump Station?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Um, this is just an amendment to the design and plan for specifications for a, a large chemical tank. And by code, it needs fire suppression. It was a little change from the original design years ago. This chemical is hydrogen peroxide, potassium hydroxide, which raises the pH in water, which keeps us red down below M C L levels. So all this is, is a design for change of, the building needs fire suppression now.
Okay. Um, any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, has this amendment to the agreement been approved this form? I see there's a place for that to be signed off on. I wondered if that's happened yet.
I don't know. Mr. Bumpus or Mr. News, do you have an answer to that?
Mike, did Dan sign off on it? No, I didn't run this by Dan. I felt it was only a seventy-five hundred dollar change.
Madam Chairman, there's a place for, for a town council to sign on agreement. So I assume that we're going to have to run it by you.
Okay. So is this time of the essence on this, Mike? Or do, should we come back, or should we do it pursuant to town council's approval?
I like that idea better, to town council's approval, because I need to get some final numbers for October, uh, town meeting.
Okay, so could I please get the motion to approve this amendment pursuant to town council's approval?
I'll move, too.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, any further questions? Okay, all in favor, doubt a yes.
Batistini, yes.
Rosenthal, yes.
Demers, yes.
Jermaine, yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. So you're set to go, Mike? Just make sure that it's run by Dan and you get his signature, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, bye. You, too. All right, moving on. I'm going to have, I believe Karen Foy brought this to us. Did you want to talk to the, to us a little bit about what this is, Karen?
Hi, everybody. So this is a resolution in support of H D one four four zero, which is an act relative to streaming entertainment and the use of the cable companies of the rights of way, like they do for the cable. And what was submitted to the Commonwealth of Mass, we have about sixty or so signatures from local legislators. And this would basically give the Peg Access Studios, as well as the Town and the State, a way to recoup some of the funding from cord cutters. So as you know, a lot of people are cutting the cord and now streaming video. And what's happening is a lot of the Peg Access Studios' funding, which as you know, McCam is one hundred percent funded with these Peg Access funds from the cable companies. So everybody that's switching over to streaming are now still using the internet through Comcast and Verizon, and still using the public rights of way, like they do for cable. But back when the cable industry began, there was no internet, so it wasn't incorporated. So this is a resolution in support. We're hoping to have the issuing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, support this resolution and support the, the fight that's happening at town, at the state level, to get the streaming bill passed. So our cable committee voted to send our own signed resolution, and I had written this up for us to send on your behalf as well, if so interested.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board regarding this?
Madam Chair?
Uh, Mr. Jermaine.
I'm not really in favor of charging people more money. If cable didn't cost so much, people wouldn't cut the cord, so I'm, I'm not going to vote for this.
This is a, um, it's, it's actually a benefit to the communities and the state, and it's, it's for the use of the rights of ways in our community. It's not just a random fee that's attached to it. They, um, let me see, it's a, it's a statewide policy concerning the compensation for the use of the digital infrastructure on our public rights of ways. And what that does is it would help our communities continue to provide public access, government and educational access to the community.
Okay, so is this something passed on to the customers, or is it something that the, um?
This would be, this would be charged. This would be up to the streaming services to find a way to support this fee structure that's implemented by the state. There are other multiple states, I don't know all of them off the top of my head, that have already put some type of fee structure for streaming video into place because of all the cord cutting that's been happening. And we are, we do have a lot of support from the legislators in our area, as well as all over the state. It's not going to replace the cable cord cutters, the fees that we get. And just so everybody knows, those who do have Comcast and Verizon with our current, uh, way the cable is set up, two point five percent of your basic cable fee that you get charged by them comes directly back to the community to be used for public access, government access, and education access through M E T and McCam. And that equals to about two to three dollars a month per subscriber. We have about eight thousand four hundred subscribers in Middleborough.
Okay, so it would be paid for by the companies that have the streaming available?
Right, it would be Netflix, or Hulu, or Roku, or whoever the streaming service is. They would probably be charged a fee by Verizon and Comcast to be put on their, um, to use their, their internet. And it would be up to them to, to pay that. I don't know how they're going to do it. That's something that they would need to figure out.
By raising their fees, possibly. Yeah.
The way it always happens, you know? Everything's always passed through. But I'm just letting you know, it's, um, it's about two to three dollars a month. And I think for what the community gets from public access and Peg Access in general is definitely worth that. I'm a little biased.
Generally, the board likes to, I mean, this is a state bill, and we try to stay out of that, but, um, what is the pleasure of the board? Any other comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Uh, Mr. Batistini.
Um, so I don't know if I would necessarily be in favor of this or opposed to it directly. But I think personally, I think a better way might be to get some funding for MCAM. Would be if we had a municipal internet service that would be able to, you know, go towards their budget. Because they would be involved with that process, using the I net system that we already have and own in town. And I think that would be something we should explore for possible, possible revenues for MCAM.
So our I net only goes to municipal buildings that, that we own, and it is in our franchise agreement with Comcast that we cannot use that to make money.
Right, so that would have to be negotiated out in the current, uh, contract negotiations.
Have we finished our negotiations? I know you were in the process with Verizon and Comcast, were you not?
With Comcast right now. We're, we're working on a couple sections of the, um, we have a ways to go still.
Okay, how about Verizon? Have we finished?
Verizon, we haven't started with them yet.
Okay, so I think that would be something, as Selectman Batistini mentioned, you might want to look at in both Comcast and Verizon, that we can actually...
I think what, I guess what I'm saying is, the I net that we own only goes to municipal buildings. So to have, to have customers, you'd have to put fiber throughout the entire town or find another way to do it, and then be able to charge them. And it's very expensive to run fiber, or you'd have to lease it from Comcast or Verizon, and then you're just paying them, so.
If it's not likely we're doing it anyway, it might be something to still look at in these contracts, so that in the future, if we ever do want to, we're not, our hands are not tied. We can't say, oops, we can't do this because Comcast and Verizon says we can't. That would be something I would look at. I would be in favor of looking at in these contracts, both of them.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Rosenthal.
I'm, I'm in favor of, of supporting this for, for largely, maybe it's for a strange reason, but I believe in keeping a level playing field. Uh, you know, if cable has to pay this and the internet streaming doesn't on, on the computers, why, uh, we're going to lose more and more cable people? And the cable service certainly is valuable. So whatever the cable people have to pay, we probably ought to have the internet streaming people subject to the same fees. I know when we first developed the net and the internet and everything, the government thought it was a great thing to make tax free all the providers on the internet. And currently, they put half the frickin' motor businesses in the country out of business. And Amazon is an absolute goliath of mammoth business today, and a lot of it had to do with that particular advantage they would give them for a very long time. So I'm not giving one or the other an advantage. I think if we're going to charge in one, we should, we should charge both, so.
I think back in the day when internet first started, they weren't providing TV. Now a lot of the TV programming, they're, they're cutting into the whole cable TV providers. I mean, they're providing the same services, basically. So like Neil said, it's, it's a fair playing field to have everybody, you know, contribute.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Demers.
Um, I'm in favor of this simply because as more and more people cut the cord going forward, we do need to look for solutions to fund our local programming in a sustainable way. It seems like this is one of maybe, you know, many possible solutions. This, you know, quite frankly, seems like it's the easiest. You know, if we decided, if we decided to do our own internet service, we would still need people to pay for that service. So I think this is, you know, a pretty cut and dry way to make sure that, you know, our local programming is sustainably funded, because revenues for, for cable are, are dropping every year. So, you know, we have to make up the slack somewhere.
And just so you know, this would be negotiated at the state level, and a portion of the monies that would come in would go to the Commonwealth General Fund. A portion would go to the individual municipalities and local governments. And then a further allocated proportion would go to the Peg Access Studios directly. So it would, I don't know what the percentages are going to be, or how they're going to calculate it. I don't, we don't...
Or can you leave him pass? Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Giallone.
Well, my name is Brian Giallone. I'm a tax payer here in town who pays taxes and just got paid the tax bill. And I just saw a five hundred dollar bump this year in my taxes. I'm not complaining. I voted for the school, I voted for different things. But I find that the nickel and diming of people, and this is exactly what this is. Can any one of the selectmen answer this one question? How much will my Netflix subscription go up annually?
We can't, that's what I asked.
Okay, so the funny thing is, I can answer it. Based on what is here, a five percent increase amounts to ten dollars a year. Not a lot, I guess it's ten bucks. That's called nickel and dime. It's eighty cents a month on a typical Netflix subscription, and sixteen dollars a month. I already paid fifty-one dollars a year right now for, for the Peg Access fee for my cable that I pay right now. I currently pay that. I just looked it up, I went to Verizon, I looked it up on my file fill to see exactly how much I paid monthly, multiplied by twelve. So now, the funniest thing is, is I don't stream on my, my cable wire coming into my house. I stream over my telephone service. So you're going to try to sell me, you're going to charge a tax on something I don't use. And this is what this is, it's a tax. So all you're telling me is you want to raise taxes on the, the people in this town after you've already raised them, anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars on the average home in this, this town. You want a nickel and dime for another ten bucks a month, ten bucks a year. I know it doesn't sound like much, but ten bucks here, ten bucks there, and pretty soon, we're talking some serious money. I would rather give that money directly to MCAM. If you need twenty thousand bucks, because by the way, four thousand people using Netflix in the town of Middleborough is thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, which is twice as much. But we just got told that we won't get the whole nickel, because the state's going to peel off some of it themselves. So not only you're, you're voting in support of nickel and diming, and you're going to be two, two and a half cent nickeling them because you're only going to have the money, just like everything else the state does. They, they charge you a dollar and give you back ten to fifteen or eighteen cents. So I just find it hard that we're going to support this, because this is the first step. The next step is, they're going to want to charge us for the internet access. Because I haven't paid for streaming. I pay a big chunk of change for a big bit of service coming into my house, and now you want to charge me more?
I just want to make it clear that this is going to be up to the state house, it's up to the House and Senate. This is, do we support this bill or not? So just so people don't say, the Selectmen raised our taxes. Whether this passes or not, we are not raising your taxes. I just want to make that clear.
Oh, I understand. Oh, I understand, but even supporting the raising of people's taxes at a state level where, if you were telling me you're gonna take a whole nickel and bring it right to this town, I'd be more in support of it. But because the state's gonna get their fair share, it's not worth us giving them a piece of this so that we can get $20,000 back to cover a debt. I'd rather take $20,000 out of general government, put it in there. That's what I would rather do to help support M C A M. They do an awesome job for us. But to turn around and just add it on, I'll tell you, I'm ready to cut the cord myself so I can get rid of the $50 a year that I pay already. And that's where it's headed. Everyone's gonna do it.
I know.
But to support this, it's another tax that doesn't need to be supported. Next thing you know, we'll be trying to support a nickel on every plastic bag that gets sold in this town, or a dime, or anything else that goes on in this town. We're gonna want a nickel for this, a nickel for that.
Okay, let's bring it back to cable. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Givernoni. Karen, did you want to respond to that?
Well, like I said, it's the fair use of our public rights way to be, and it is, it is a fee, and it goes through the state. As a municipal department, I can't do fundraising. So we, you know, we pride ourselves that we survive on our funding through Comcast and Verizon. And if we, you know, we're losing customers, we're losing subscribers, the best way for us to recoup any funding is to get the streaming bill to pass so we can have them somehow figure out a way to pay, to give us a chunk, so.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Givernoni.
We talk about fair use. I pay $3,000 a year for fair use. $3,000 a year I pay for fair use of my town's utility pole, which is owned half by Verizon already anyway, most of them. Most of them are half owned, so when you say fair use, we're talking about Verizon already owns half the pole. They own the upper half, we own the lower half on probably 85 or 90% of the poles out there. So it's not just fair use. And they're already collecting a fee for that. We keep paying and paying, and we're gonna put a fee on top of a fee on top of a fee. It's getting out of control. And as somebody, like I said, I just, $3,000 a year I pay for my service. So to say I'm not paying my fair share, I'm paying more than my fair share.
Well, maybe this will just allocate your fair share to us.
I would allocate.
Add a tax to the bill for a franchise fee. I don't know.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Rosenthal.
The whole system is in flux. I just heard there's some massive deal today involving AT&amp;T and some of the networks and everything else. I mean, everything is in flux. We don't know where it's gonna end up. I just believe that all of these entities ought to be held to the same standards. And people can choose what they want to go and what medium they want to use. But I certainly wouldn't want to lose access to our local government channels and all the things that M C A M provides for us over that kind of small money. So I'm voting for it.
Okay, anyone else from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
Through you to Mr. Newans. Bob, is there, is there anything that we can do on the town level to fund M C A M directly?
I don't think that's possible. Karen weigh in on that, because of FCC?
Well, if funding goes away, then the town would probably take over as our funding source. But I don't, I mean, it's adding a whole department, so I don't know. I don't think the FCC has anything to do with that part of it. There's nonprofits that run other cable access studios, but they can do the fundraising as well.
And obviously, that would have to be a decision of town.
The town, yep.
Local government.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Battistini.
Is it possible for M C A M to get a revolving account? Or is that not allowed under the current legislation?
Kind of like what they have, isn't it?
Well, they do, yes. They do have a separate account that is approved at town meeting. User fees offset the expenses. So it's not part of the general operating budget.
Right now, their user fees, as you saw in the budget we just passed, are covering the cost of their department.
Correct.
But the fear is that as people stop using Verizon and Comcast, that those fees will go down and not cover the cost. Is that correct, Karen?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, yes, go ahead.
So is there, I mean, I don't know if there's an answer that could be provided for this right now. But is there a way that we can create a, I guess, you know, create a budget for M C A M that is, that the town would make whole? So to say, for example, if they had a, you know, if they're expecting to get in $100,000 a year from user fees, and they only get in, you know, 85, or the next year they only get 75, is there something that we could do that way to make them whole? I guess that's what we're trying to do, right Karen, or trying to make sure that M C A M is basically funded.
What I love about Middleborough is we're a lot of old school people, so we still have a lot more cable subscribers. The cable cord cutting is happening more in the urban areas. We have only lost about maybe like 2% of our franchise fees that come into us. Other communities have lost 7 to 14%. So, you know, we're doing okay right now. I don't know how the town will go about supplementing a budget when we're funded with, that would have to go to town meeting and be voted on.
But we're not at that point now. It's just like an enterprise account. If the revenues and revenue expenditure, the cut expenses or raise fees.
And we are negotiating with Comcast right now. So hopefully, that 2.5% will go up to what other communities are getting, and that'll raise more funds for us. But this house bill is something that was put forth by a lot of other communities and legislators. So we were just looking to support that for the future.
Okay, anyone else from the board?
I'd just like to point out that if we make M C A M part of our annual budget and fund that department, that we'll all end up paying more for M C A M that we're gonna pay based on this PEG access. And I think we're way better off staying with what we got, rather than taking on that department.
Okay, anyone else from the board? Go ahead, okay, from the audience. Go ahead, Mr. Givernoni.
And Madam Chair, as Mr. Boyd just said, as they're negotiating, they're hoping to raise that 2.5% fee up already to something else. So that's on top of you supporting, potentially supporting the other fees, this would be an additional fee on top of what we're already paying, so. And I understand, they're trying to get their revenue from the users, which I don't disagree with. It's the way to do it. But to all of a sudden, charge a fee on top of a fee that I'm already paying for something else, it is what it is. I just, I'm actually reducing my bill right now on Verizon. So my 2.5 is gonna drop. So you're gonna lose an extra $16 a year for me.
Okay, anyone else from the audience have anything they'd like to offer or ask? Go ahead, or Mr. Jermaine, go ahead.
Just a quick clarification. I am supportive of M C A M. I just don't think that we should be penalizing the users that stayed with the cable. We're gonna charge them more money or charge cord cutters? If the end result was, it didn't cost so much money, you'd stay with cable. So isn't the end result that we could have the cable companies reduce their costs and stay with them? So we should be negotiating with Verizon and Comcast, not with more fees and more users. And I hate to say it, but the station has made a tax they didn't like. So just pass the buck, everything goes on in the government, you know?
We have no say, Madam Chairman. We have no say as far as what your cable rates are, unfortunately, or programming. That's two things we have no control over. You know, we love everybody's cable bill to go down, but...
I know it's not your, you don't set the prices. What I'm saying is, we should be negotiating, or Comcast or Verizon should be figuring it out to find a way to reduce their bill, like AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. You know, compete with each other and reduce their prices, and you'll switch your provider or whatever. But the problem is, only two game in town, it's Verizon and Comcast, and they know they got us. So cut the cord.
Well, we're fortunate we have two. A lot of communities only have one, and they don't have a choice, so.
If I might ask Karen, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Start out with local control, and then go to state control, and then the feds got involved in it, more or less decided what the parameters were for all of this cable stuff. Isn't that how it worked? I think I remember when we actually had local control, or something that approximated it.
With the... I'm sorry.
Cable networks coming in. It was that the individual communities could actually negotiate their own deals. And then the state basically took that over, and then I believe the feds got involved in it because it was supposedly gonna be far cheaper that way than if the state were left controlling it.
Well, in Massachusetts...
It went down. But then it skyrocketed after that happened.
In Massachusetts, we still negotiate local contracts and franchise fees. States like California, they do a one contract for the entire state. So we're fortunate where we, that's why we're negotiating right now with Comcast. But there's only certain things that we can discuss. And, you know, we're working on trying to get a senior discount. We're working on a couple of things that came up that our survey that we did a couple years ago with the community, what they want to see. So, you know, unfortunately, we can't control the rates themselves, but we can, you know, try to get the Comcast and Verizon to give us a deal on equipment or, you know, annual funding with grant funding that's not passed through to the customer. So we're trying.
Okay, so anyone else from the audience? We're kind of getting off the subject here. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I'm a support H D 14 party.
Yeah, I have a motion to support. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, doubt a nay.
Battistini, no. Rosenthal, yay. Demers, yes. Jermaine, no.
Okay, so we will not be sending a letter. Okay, I see that Jason Fox signed on. Jason, we have Memorial Day services.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I wanted to give you guys an update of what's going on for Memorial Day. We will have a public ceremony on Monday, May 31st, at 10:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park in front of the town hall. But everyone, everyone is invited to attend. It is full, open to the public. We will not be having a parade this year. The direction from the state as of right now, parades are not allowed. I know some information has been released as of today, but opposed to scrambling around last minute to try to organize a parade, we at the time decided against it. This past, what's today, Monday? Yesterday, we gathered volunteers, and we flagged all of the, not all, but the four cemeteries that my office is responsible with. St. Mary's, Central, Titicat, and Parche. They have all been appropriately flagged. And I know the Masquet, and Thomas Town, and a lot of other smaller cemeteries that are in process of replacing their flags. So by Memorial Day, all the flags will be replaced for all of our veterans that are passed before us. Also, I want to give a reminder to everyone that the weekend of Memorial Day, the VFW will be doing their annual poppy drive at the post office, and Honeydoo, and at Hanifetz. So keep an eye out for those guys, and make sure you make a donation and get your poppy. I think that's it. That's it from Memorial Day.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Comments or questions from the audience? So a service on the 31st, then?
Monday, May 31st, at 10:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay, and buy your poppies. You heard the locations.
Buy your poppies from the VFW.
Great, all right, thank you, Jason.
All right, thanks. Have a good night.
Yep, you too. Moving on, item H. So could I please get a motion to vote to approve a submission of a destination development grant for the Pierce Building? This is a grant offered through the Office of Travel and Tourism, and it is for capital expenditures. And this in combination with the one-stop, one-step grant, we are, one-stop grant, sorry, I was right the first time. We are trying to raise a good chunk of change in grant money to get the Pierce Building open within the next year. So, Bob, did you want to talk about the working group and the plans for what's gonna be going in there? Jason just left, but I know the Veterans Offices, eventually the Veterans Museum, and as a part of a stipulation for this grant, there will be a visitor center, hopefully, in combination with the Chamber of Commerce. Have I missed anything?
No, that's a good summary. We're meeting with the inspectors. I'm sure we'll have a funding proposal before town meeting.
Right, this grant came up very quickly. It was a fast turnaround. It is a grant that will be in by the end of this week, and approved by the month of June to start to use on July 1st of this year. So we've worked hard, we've got it almost together to go out, and then the one-stop will, for underutilized buildings, will go in the following week. And hopefully, we will have that by the fall. So it looks like there's some movement on the Pierce Building. Any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Just to the point of interest, the Chamber of Commerce, at one time, their primary function was to guarantee safe passage on the highways. And basically, they got bandits off the highways, and that's why they had all those little visitor centers, the information centers all over the road. I don't know if anybody knows that, but that's...
No.
Yeah.
Very interesting. Well, now we'll keep the bandits off the road if we can get open up.
That's right.
Anyone else from the board? Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, doubt a yes.
Battistini, yes. Rosenthal, yes. Demers, yes. Jermaine, yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, moving on. We have a hearing. That's, I did get everything right? Yes, I did. 7:30 p.m., we have a hearing. It's a new hearing. Hold on a second. For an earth removal permit. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass. on Monday, May 17th, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. and through Zoom for the purposes of discussing an application filed by Gap Engineering, Inc. for an earth removal permit for property located on Old Center Street, Middleborough. Assessors map 040, lot 4916. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Okay, we are open. Who is here on behalf of Gap Engineering, or on behalf of the applicant?
Madam Chairman, it's Bob Rogers, representing GAF Engineering and the Maryland Trust this evening.
Okay. So would you like to give us a summary of the project? And then we'll address some of the comments from the departments?
Sure, that's fine, Madam Chair. So this is a approximately 32-acre parcel of land that's active. Cranberry bogs, referred to as the Dodge Bogs. And so there's an area of upwind between the existing cranberry bogs and Route 44. So our earth removal application would remove sand and gravel from that hill to establish suitable grades for a 2.5-acre cranberry bog. There's a smaller section of existing cranberry bog, which would be excavated to create a tailwater recovery pond. The project has received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. We have provided the board of selectmen with the required application project plan, dust mitigation plan. We have submitted a farm plan. We're requesting a permit, the permit to be for a three-year period. That's, do the math, it comes out to about 85,000 cubic yards per year. We've got a traffic, traffic plan, dust mitigation, as it said. So we've submitted quite a bit of information. To the chairs, you know, however you choose to proceed. I do have the drawings and the application, the backup material. I have it on a disc, so it's entirely up to you if you'd like me at some point to share my screen and show the plans.
I don't think we have the capacity to do that, do we, Colleen?
I have provided everything to the board that was given to us, so if you want to see the plans.
Okay, so we would have it, yep. I'd like to take... Um, I'd like to take care of some housekeeping first with the departments that have weighed in, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
So first of all, we have some comments from the Conservation Commission, which you said you have, um, they have, uh, issued an, uh, order of conditions. Um, they just note if there are any changes that you would have to go back to Comcast, any changes or variations from the plans that they ordered, the, uh, issued the order of conditions on. Also, um, they asked if you had filed with the EPA an MPDES. That's the National, um, Pollution Discharge Elimination System, I believe it is. Have you filed that? And also a storm water pollution prevention plan, has that been submitted to either the EPA or the DEP?
So those are, uh, those permits are actually one and the same. So, so it's a, uh, it's an EPA Construction Phase Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. Um, so these, these are typically applied for after you receive all local approvals. Um, for example, we would be including the order of conditions, which we just received a few weeks ago, um, as part of our storm water pollution prevention plan. Um, any special conditions that the Board of Selectmen, uh, may impose could, could be impactful for the drainage permit. But so, um, following, if, you know, if we successfully obtain this permit, then we would be issuing a storm water pollution prevention plan. And, and then you file what is, you file electronically what is called a, a notice of intent. And so, um, the information for the most part in that involves, uh, responsible parties and the, the dates of operation, um, when you're going to start, when you're going to finish. But, so we, we would be filing for that permit after we received local approval.
Okay, so that, getting that, um, filing for that would be part of the, uh, requirements for the permit? You'd understand that then, correct?
Certainly, and I believe it's also referenced as a condition in the order of conditions.
Okay. All right, so that's what Comcast had. Any questions from the board on Comcast's, uh, comments? Okay, moving on, Planning Board seems to be, have nothing to comment. Um, the DPW, so, um, and I know we have someone also here from the Friends of the Middleborough Cemeteries. You, I'm sure, aware, hi, Jeff, just unmute yourself if you need to talk. Um, so you're aware that the Eaton North Burial Grounds, um, are right in that vicinity? And, uh, both the DPW and I'm sure the Friends of the Middleborough Cemeteries want to know, um, what measures will be taken during construction to protect that, uh, burial ground from disturbance?
Yeah, so that burial ground shows up on our plans and we, um, we reviewed it. Everyone who attended the onsite had the opportunity to walk with us up to that area. Um, what we've, um, committed to is, is a twenty-five foot setback um, from what we understand to be the limits of, of the burial, um, area. So we certainly don't want to in any way disturb that. Uh, but the, the beginning of the top of slope would be twenty-five feet away from that cemetery.
Okay, um, Jeff, did you want to weigh in? I know you're probably more familiar with it than we are.
Yes, uh, this is a cemetery that, uh, has really almost been lost to the community in that it is back in the woods behind some of the houses along, off of Old Center Street, right there. And, um, if you didn't know it was there, you, you go up and even then you have a hard time finding it. Uh, they have indeed done a very good job of identifying the boundaries and, uh, even located any graves that are there. Unfortunately, sometime, uh, we understand perhaps in the nineteen fifties and sixties, some damage was done to a lot of the stones and other things that are there. Um, for everybody's knowledge, uh, in, under Massachusetts law, burial grounds, even on private property, cannot be just plowed under and, and made into a parking lot or anything like that. They are protected. And, uh, so in, in that way, this must continue to exist. We have, uh, an interest among the Friends of Middleborough Cemeteries to try and help improve this because right now it's in really terrible shape up there. Uh, there's also some neighbors in the neighborhood who would very much be interested in helping with fencing and signage and other things to make this much more visible to the community. And, uh, would like to work also with the, the company to see if there are ways to make access because right now it's a very difficult spot to get up to. So with that said, um, you know, we just want everybody to be aware, and I know the company already is aware of the fact that you kind of just turn around and act like this place and so it's just a batch of steddy trees and knock it all down and start over again.
Okay, so we are keeping the twenty-five foot, um, setback to make sure there's no disturbance there. That's the, the procedures that are going to be put in place. And, uh, seems like everybody's in agreement. They will be, that should be sufficient. Um, any comments from the board? Moving on to the next. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rosenthal.
Is that cemetery actually on this property, the thirty-one acres?
Yes.
Is it part of the thirty-one acre parcel?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I wanted to ask Jeff, Jeff, what do you think of twenty-five feet from, uh, the, uh, father's burial? Is that sufficient?
I, I think it probably is. It's really more a matter of, uh, I, I'm concerned about what, when they take down, how is, is this land going to become in some way accessible to the community, if any way? Um, you know, are we going to have a, a much of a drop down when they take out the sand and the, and the gravel that they're talking about removing? Um, you know, I, I just don't understand exactly what that area is going to be like after they do that.
Mr. Rogers, can you address that? Will that be, uh, accessible after the project, do you believe?
Well, it certainly, uh, would be difficult to access from, um, from the, toward the bog, the toe of the slope. I mean, we've got a significant slope that's at two to one. Um, it would be accessible from the old Center Street side, if you will. Um, again, not having the plan, uh, in front of me. Uh, but it, you know, it is, it is on, um, the applicant's property. I, I don't know, um, if there's a responsibility to provide accessibility, but, um, it's, it, as, as, uh, Mr. Stevens stated now, it, it is remote in its current location. We, you know, we can't change the location, but, um, you know, we're, we're providing a twenty-five foot, um, area that would stay at its current grade before we excavate down toward the, uh, cranberry bogs.
Do you have any idea how much of a drop it would be down to the level of the cranberry bogs? Because it looks to me like it's, you know, thirty-five, forty feet down.
Yes, yes, it is. Um, you know, it would be, it would be accessible in its current state, um, from the, again, not to say I don't know who, who has an interest or rights to view it. Certainly it's historical, it's, it's significant, but, um, you know, it's, it's mostly, uh, better access from other people's property. Um, not that I'm proposing that, but, but there's, there's a one hundred foot width along the existing bog road which would remain at its current grade. And so if there was a need and if there was permission, um, to, to go up there, then what's existing on, on the north side, I guess I should say, of the cemetery or the existing cranberry bog side of the, the cemetery, that would be, um, the way to get to it. We actually took sort of a long winding trail. Um, and, you know, we sort of walked to the south and then to the east when we did our onsite in order to, to get to that spot.
And it may well be that the, the, the neighbors might be willing to have a access that goes out to Old Center Street. But anyway, that hasn't been committed yet. And, uh, as I say, I, my, my main focus today was to make sure everyone heard that you just cannot, as I say, turn this into a parking lot. It's not at all suggesting that you were intending to by any means. Um, and hopefully we'll have ways to make this much more, uh, available to the community. There is a Revolutionary War veteran who is buried there and, uh, there are five or six or eight families that are in there.
So, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Duvanam.
As a point of information, the elevation is approximately elevation sixty-four that runs through the, the burial area. And the area of the, um, the road, the access around the bog is elevation thirty-six based on the plans that are here. But it's, it's also, that, 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 uh, burial ground is located mostly in the hundred foot setback away from that wooded setback that, uh, away from people's properties as well. It's up, it'll be up on a plateau and, uh, I don't, I'm not making light when I say it's going to be a gorgeous view. Uh, I just think that it's going to be actually very pretty that, um, we're not developing this into a residential subdivision, that it's going to be a cranberry bog and almost nat- natural in, 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 um, and it's, it's in nature. I, I think that's beautiful.
Yep, and I'm to understand the slope is going to be two to one, so that'll be stabilized at twenty-five feet from the, um, burial, the cemetery, correct?
Yes, we're gonna, uh, it's gonna be two to one, it'll be stabilized with, um, wood chips, uh, demolitions.
I just don't want the cemetery falling down.
Nor do we.
No, I don't think any of us do. I just wanted to confirm that so everybody knows.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Kathleen Easterbrook's, two seventy, Old Center Street. The people buried there lived in our home. Um, so, uh, Captain Benjamin Leonard is buried there. He was a Revolutionary War, uh, veteran and his family, his wife and, uh, some of his children, and then there were other ones as, as, um, Jeff said. But, you know, at some point, it had to have been easy to get up there. I'm not saying they have to redo it, but they had to have been able to get from our house down across and up there at some point. Now, whether the cranberry bogs or the house, housing developments changed it, but it couldn't have been as difficult to get because they would have, you know, carried coffins from here.
Right.
So, um, we're, so I, it's just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments or questions about the burial ground from the board? From the audience? Okay, I'm going to move on to the second item from the DPW. Um, so you know signs will be along the property that display the permit number, the name and phone number of the permit holder's agent and the name and phone number of the Board of Selectmen's agent, together with the words "No Trespassing Earth Removal in Progress." Um, uh, and the agent is usually the DPW. This is not your first rodeo, I know this, Jeff. So I'm just, but I'm just for the public and just so that we can go through it, okay? Um, I don't think there's a problem with that. Moving on to three, uh, the applicant should verify that all trucks involved in the earth removal have attached to the truck the required sticker reading "The Middleborough Permit Number." We know that too. Um, number four, the board should consider requesting a phasing plan to reflect the anticipated progress of the earth removal at the end of each year of the permit. Now, this is something we've been talking about for a while, because some of them have gotten away from us. So, um, I know we do do annual inspections, but if we can get some indication that it's progressing.
Quarterly. We do quarterly inspections.
Right, I meant quarterly, sorry. We do quarterly inspections, but to make sure that the, the work is progressing and it's not all of a sudden three years later and, and we haven't done anything, or you haven't done anything. Um, it'll assist the town and the applicant with keeping the project on schedule. So that's something I think, um, we're going to try to, uh, include in the permits from now on. Um, and also the DPW recommends a fifty thousand dollar bond or acceptable alternative surety, uh, to be in place prior to issuing the permit. Uh, did you want to comment on any of those?
We have in the past done those, uh, phases. You guys set, we, we, I think on most of our permits, we have all, always done phases. Uh, and this shows the progress of what, what we anticipate and where we're going to go with it.
Right, and it's to help everybody, you know?
A hundred percent, yep.
They can't get away from you. You, all of a sudden, three years is up and you're like, where am I? Um, yeah, so you have no objections to that being included in the permit?
No, I think we, we've always done that. We've always prepared it and I know so too.
Another thing I'd like to bring up is, um, recording the permit. Yes, that's another thing that I can get.
We've always done that, but I know there, that has been issued with some money else.
I'm not sure whether we, yeah.
Yep, however you guys want, if you want me to deal with it or, I usually do it and I bring the receipt to Colleen. So, um, we can still do that or you guys, if you feel more comfortable doing it yourselves?
Um, I know the board had discussed a couple of weeks ago a possibly making, changing the process so that the board would just charge and we would do it. I don't think we're at that point for this permit so far. I don't know. They can weigh in on it. But, um, yeah, it's just again, so we can keep track. It's, it's very difficult, especially when the board changes over every year, so just to keep track of these things. Yep, okay, um, so those are the comments from the DPW. Any comments or questions from the board on the DPW comments?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Demers?
Um, I would just like to add that, uh, um, I, I would, obviously the, the phase approach is, is great. Um, but also I would like to add to that, that if there's any deviation to, to those phases, um, that the, uh, the, the board of DPW, um, would be notified.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Rosenthal?
I have a question relative to the final grade. How close is that to the water table?
Um, well, I can tell you that the new cranberry bog is a foot and a half above the existing cranberry bog. Um, typically I think we want to be within two feet of the groundwater table or there, thereabouts. Uh, we've got elevations on the plan for the tailwater recovery pond, the existing cranberry bog and the new cranberry bog. So, uh, in order to, um, you know, have water flow from the new bog into the tailwater recovery and then into the existing bog, um, that, that's how our elevations were established.
Do you happen to know what Water Resource Protection District, uh, this is in? Zone three, zone four, zone two?
I don't know off the top of my head, um, and I don't know that it's necessarily in one. I think, I believe it's a zone three.
Okay, well, zone, zone three, if it's zone three, there, there's no excavation, uh, below two feet above the water table other than for agriculture? But this is, there's more excavation here that just involves agriculture. Uh, how much of this lot, this thirty-one point sixty-six acres is actually going to be excavated in order to create this pond?
I haven't calculated that. I, I think that when I look at the plan, it's about half of the property, maybe fifteen acres. But, you know, you, you can't, um, you can't get the two and a half acre bog at the grade that it's at in that location without, you know, performing the full excavation that, that we've shown on the plans. And we, we do have a, a, a barn, a, a maintenance building proposed in the, uh, the easternmost corner. So that would be a, uh, four thousand square foot building. That's, uh, making room for that is also another reason for the earth removal.
Madam Chair, this parcel is completely outside of zone three based on the zoning maps of the town that I'm looking at right now.
So it's not in the, uh, WRPD district?
It is completely out, it's completely, the entire parcel is completely out of the, uh, the zone three.
Well, Madam Chairman, the reason I ask this is that was stated in the farm plan that the whole thing sits on an aquifer. And I know that we have a well on Cross Street, so I was sort of interested in how removal of the overburden will affect the storage of water in that area, among other things. Another question I have is, uh, from every other external boundary, you are a hundred feet away from every external boundary before you start your slope?
We're a hundred feet away from the, the residences. Um, we're up to the Route forty-four layout line, uh, but we're almost, uh, two hundred feet away from the roadway. So yes, we, we are a hundred feet from, from the residences that abut, uh, Center Street.
And, uh, another issue I have is, is, uh, that I don't particularly like two to one slopes because basically you can't walk down them. I much prefer three to one slopes, and that's what we always used to require. We used to allow sometimes three to one slopes with, uh, interim slope during the construction of a bog, but all of the final slopes were always three to one. Seems like we're inching ever closer to two to one slopes, which are pretty steep.
We actually do that on purpose now. Um, because of the steep of the slope, the less chance of runoff. It gives us more land for the cranberry bog. And we discourage people from walking in and out of these bogs. That's, we've gone to the two to one for the last four or five projects that we've done, uh, to stop people from entering or, you know, exiting. The four-wheelers driving up and down the burnes. Uh, there was quite a few, uh, thought processes put into the two to one versus the three to one. Three to one, it, the maintenance is, is a nightmare.
I know that three to one was the way we went for many years.
Yep.
And the other issue I have is, is with the whole notion of, of saving these small bogs and doing us a great favor by doing so. Because they're really not economically viable, uh, without the earth removal. uh, without the earth removal. So, the question becomes whether this is an earth removal project or a bog reclamation project, as far as I'm-
Exactly.
So, uh, Madam Chair, if I may-
Go ahead, yep.
So, the only, there's only one way to create an upland bog, and, and that is to ex- do your excavation in upland, um, but I, I don't disagree with what the gentleman is saying. Um, these earth removal and the establishment of cranberry bogs, um, you know, I would say ninety percent of the time, it goes, goes hand in hand. And, uh, you know, you, you, in order to create the agriculture, you, you have to have an economically viable plan to do so.
Well, if I might add to that, there is, uh, the case law on this says that the earth removal, both in scope and from a point of view of profitability, has to be accessory to the, to the cranberry bog, the end, the end agricultural use. In other words, you can't take a million yards out and build one acre cranberry bog. That's not even remotely reasonable. Uh, this one is much more complex and convoluted because you are reclaiming some old bog, but it is taking out an awful lot of gravel from a financial perspective to create a very small area of a bog. And, uh, in the, I'm, I'm not sure that the case law would support doing this for agricultural purposes, to be honest with you.
We did this, um, on the last, um, cranberry bog that we did, we had, uh, five hundred thousand yards to come out. We stopped sixty houses from going up on the Fuller Street, uh, project. This one here is a smaller, much smaller scale. Um, we talked with the neighbors before we got into this, and the neighbors were completely in favor of a farm being up there with a view versus a bunch of houses. So, I went through, and I did my due diligence before I invested into this and went this direction. Um, I strongly suggest that this is not a earth removal, massive earth removal for a small bog. This is a small earth removal for adding to a very small bog and making it more of a viable. You have to have at least five acres to make it a viable farm. With five acres, we can sustain, uh, the farm rights there. And once it becomes the cranberry bog, it's the cranberry bog forever. That's what it's gonna be.
Yes, Madam Chairman, if I might respond. Uh, I never would've approved the Fuller Street project. I thought that was a, a ridiculous project, and, uh, the fact that it saved sixty house lots, uh, there's tons of land where people can build houses. They're not gonna build houses on every piece of land in Middleborough at once, and the law is very clear on, on agriculture, that it has to be viable agriculture, and that, that in scope and, and, uh, that it has to be, that the earth removal can only be accessory, both based on profitability and on the actual scope of the project. So, I would never have gone along with your Fuller Street project. Uh, this one, as far as I'm concerned, is right on the line. Very iffy.
Okay, anyone else from the board? Anyone else from the audience?
Madam Chairperson?
Uh, go ahead, on the line, go ahead.
Louise Derry Wells, nine Chestnut Street. Um, I risk, uh, being somewhat redundant with my comments, given Mr. Rosenthal has commented at length, but I have two concerns. It does stand out to me, Madam Chairperson, I'm not an engineer, obviously, but it does appear that this is primarily an earth removal, servicing a relatively, relatively small bog area. It doesn't seem warranted to me as an agricultural project. I'm also concerned, you know, again, without knowing enough about it, I guess, you can let me know, but twenty-five feet from the cemetery, if that's sandy area, the cemetery's in the sandy area, I would expect that cemetery has a real chance of washing out at some point in a, in a drop like this, and that bed could just crumble, and I think that would be a shame. I think we're going to do extraordinary measures to remove earth here to create a small bog and to potentially destroy a cemetery, historical cemetery, and I, I'm not favorable, just for what it's worth. Thank you, Mrs. Chairperson.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Salamon?
Yes, um, just, uh, what, they're gonna remove so much gravel out of this area. We have a noise problem here already with, uh, Route forty-four, and as everyone knows, it backs up in the circle sometimes. It's fairly a problem in the mornings when you hear all these trucks coming out and everything. Is there any way, I'm not against the project, but is there any way we can have like a noise barrier like some other areas have?
We actually did-
If we're moving out much of the mountain, we're gonna have even more noise. That's the only concern we have.
Mr. Aruda, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, yes, we actually took that in consideration and on, on our new plan, we did put a sound barrier, because the way it's sloped right now, they're getting the traffic noise coming across the property. Um, we, they're actually gonna have less noise when we're done, 'cause we are putting a sloped, um, if you see on the, as a noise barrier put in, in consideration for, for the neighbors on the other side. So, we took everything that the neighbors had, said that day, and we addressed every single one of the concerns. Um, we think and we know that we have a beautiful project that's gonna stay a farm, um, and it'll, it'll be a farm forever. It's not gonna be something that's gonna be houses later. It's gonna be a farm. So, that's, that's the direction that, um, I've been pushing. Um, I thought that we were doing a good thing on a lot of these. Um, didn't realize, some people had, um, opinions that the Fuller Street project was not a good one, but going to this one, um, this is a small project, and it's very, it's gonna, they're gonna be a beautiful area. It's a, the neighbors seemed like they were very, um, in favor of this project, so we took all the concerns that they had, addressed them, and we're going to make it a better, uh, noise barrier than what they have currently.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, basically, as long as we're gonna have some kind of a barrier there, that, that's fine, we're fine with that. And we did, we were at the meetings with these gentlemen, you know, we have no complaints except this noise, that's all.
Madam, Madam Chair, just, just to be, just to be clear, so, so we're creating an earth berm, so it's, it's not like, uh, one of these walls that you see along, uh, Route twenty-four, but we, we did modify the plans based on the input that we received at the on-site with conservation, and so we added a six-to-seven foot high earth berm along the edge of the Route forty-four highway layout. It just picks that up.
Yep, go ahead.
Let's bring up another question. How many, I remember we were discussing how many trees are gonna be left between Route forty-four and the bog or whatever you're gonna put in there. So, what is the distance to Route forty-four with the amount of trees that have been left? Is it twenty-five feet?
No, like two hundred.
I wondered if I said-
I'm sorry, it's a hundred, a hundred and ninety-five feet, um, a hundred and ninety-five feet, sir, from the edge of the work to the edge of pavement on Route forty-four.
You know, I, I, I just walked it the other day. I'd be surprised if there's a hundred and ninety-five feet trees there, you know?
It's a, it's a very wide layout for Route forty-four.
Well, we walk it from our house. It's not fun. We just go down our backyard and we walk, 'cause the path that goes all around the box, maybe if it is. So, you know, it just don't seem like there's that many trees if, if you're gonna remove all that dirt.
Would be trees-
I don't think a six-foot berm would do it. I mean, is there any other, and, and any other way we can apply for like a, a wall like they have down the other end of Route forty-four, where there is a housing behind it?
Well, it's only gonna be temporary sound, so, um, I don't know, would you like to respond to that, Bob Rogers?
I don't know how you'd even know about asking for a wall. You know, who, whose responsibility is it? Is it the state, or is it the people doing the project? I don't, you know, we're just afraid of the noise, to be perfectly frank.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, uh, when they, when they say it's two hundred feet from the pavement, it's not two hundred feet from the layout, and what a layout means is that that's the actual roadbed that could be used. So, ultimately, they could make the road that took up that entire two hundred feet, and you'd have nothing but the drop-off to those bogs, just, just so you understand that, that, uh, layout means exactly what it says, layout. So, there's no setback from the layout at all. It's right to the edge of the layout, basically, and then it goes right down.
Well, again, our concern is the noise, that's all. You know, I just don't think a six-foot berm after removing a mountain would be enough to stop the noise. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't seem to me that that would work.
This is, this, this is Paula McKenna. I live on Upland, um, Drive also.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I'm also very concerned about the noise, and I heard someone say it was only gonna be temporary. I believe that there's probably two issues. One is the noise that we will be, um, hearing at the time that they're removing the earth, and then once they're finished with it, we will be left with the, um, noise.
No, that is not true. It's not a temporary sound there. This is a earth berm, just like we did on, on Fuller Street. We took and went from the inside, so you're not gonna get, Fuller Street project was inside, we took, lived down, and now it's, um, when we open it up, the cranberry bog will reveal. Um, the neighbors on Fuller Street, I don't think you haven't received one complaint. Those people love that we did this project. And the same thing's gonna happen here. These people, you're gonna have less noise when we're done. We're gonna put a berm on the outside of the layout, um, that's gonna be a permanent berm. On our property, permanent berm, never to be touched, mulched, the trees will grow on it, and it'll be done.
Yeah, I was not referring to the berm as being temporary. I was referring to the earth removal. It, it's finite, it ends at some point. It's not gonna go on forever.
Well, I mean, we, we have noise, we have noise now that was not here when I moved in eleven years ago. So, I mean, the noise that we have currently has changed over the past decade. So, just changing more topography, I'm just concerned it's gonna increase even greater than what we have now. And another question I have, and I'll be honest that I'm just not very familiar with this. On Upland Drive, we're all on wells. When they start removing all of this dirt, is that going to impact, uh, the water table for our area, or anything to do with changing what we have going with our wells? And truly, I just don't know.
And the engineer would like to land on that, yeah?
We're on Old Center Street, and we have the same question about our well.
Okay, just before you, just keep talking, just identify yourself, please, for the records.
Leonard Zerlong from two seventy-seven Old Center.
Okay, go ahead.
We're also concerned about the, uh, water table because we are directly next to the bogs, and we're on a private well here as, as well.
Okay, so, could the engineer weigh in on the water table and how it will be affecting the, the surrounding wells, please?
Well, so what I can tell you is this is, it's an area of, of sand and gravel, and, and it's, it's heavily wooded right now. Um, upon the completion of the project, the slope will remain sand and gravel, and any, the rainwater is basically gonna go to the cranberry bogs and to the tailwater recovery pond, and so, they're gonna manage that water with flumes, uh, and, and basically, they're gonna keep the water to the same levels that they currently do. Um, there's not gonna be any changes to the, to the flume at Center Street or the flumes in the, in the existing bog, but, um, so we're not, any rainfall that is gonna recharge the groundwater table, um, if, if anything, I think it's, it's gonna be, uh, more of recharge to the groundwater because we're creating this cranberry bog and tailwater recovery pond that's basically gonna, gonna store, uh, what otherwise would be, would be runoff, um, either to forty-four or, or, you know, um, there's probably less groundwater recharge in, in that woods with all the uptake from the vegetation than what would happen at the end of the day. But, they're gonna manage it, um, to the exist, to the existing elevations of, of the cranberry bog that's gonna remain. Um, the water basically flows from, from west to east, and, you know, they're gonna discharge excess water and operate it, um, seasonally, you know, in the manner that's required to grow the berries.
Madam Chair?
Um, yes, who's speaking?
This is Bob Easterbrook speaking from two seventy, Old Center Street.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have, uh, thank you. I have three questions. Uh, one is a general one, uh, uh, from the board. This right now is a three-year project, and my question to you folks is, generally speaking, um, how many extensions would you be interested in, uh, extending to these folks if this project goes more than three years? That's my first question. The second is, have you seen a plan for, uh, directing traffic, uh, north and south from the project? You know, uh, I spoke to Mr. Aruda about this during the walkthrough, and, uh, I expressed my concern about deterioration of Old Center Street, which is now, of course, a bypass with a rotary. And at this, at this time, even before this project goes, there is quite a bit of sand and gravel trucks going by here, and, and, uh, this, this road was redone five years ago, and it's already deteriorating. So, I'm interested in knowing if you've seen their plan for rerouting traffic in the two directions, and then perhaps Mr. Aruda can address this. Do you have any concept of, or idea how many trucks, uh, we would be expecting to go by, uh, the, out of the bog per day when this project begins?
Go ahead, Mr. Aruda, if you wanted to address that. We usually, um, get a number of how many trips a day on these, so that would be information coming. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, sometimes we don't even get to the number that you guys allow us to. It depends on job location, um, and, uh, timing. Like, a lot of times, I'll do more trucking in the winter when people aren't out in their yards, um, just for cur- uh, courtesy of the neighbors. Um, but we'd never exceed these truck limitations on all of our bogs that we don't, um-
I appreciate that, but I'm looking for, uh, a number. Uh, this house is almost three hundred years old, and it shakes every time a, uh, an eighteen-wheeler goes by. He's, you know, um, I've already had thirty feet of wall from down because a, a concrete truck went by, um, probably twenty-five years ago. So, it's, it's, I would very much like to have an answer to that.
Um, we work an eight-hour day, and we can have as many as five to ten trucks falling a day out of there.
So, you're anticipating five, ten, uh, trucks, generally speaking, uh, uh, per day out of, out of the, uh-
Not per day, per hour.
Per hour, that's right. I wanna verify that, 'cause that's, that's-
Be up to eighty.
Quite a bit more than, than, uh, what this road has been experiencing, uh, and, um, so that leaves my next question. Um, have, I'm sure that, I don't think you folks have seen it yet, but, uh, you expressed a plan to, uh, divert traffic north and south, and, um, without having, uh, someone out there in, in the end of the driveway, I'd, I'd be very interested to know how that was gonna be affected. I can, I'll tell you folks on the select board, this rule will not tolerate that kind of, uh, traffic or extended period of time.
A lot of towns, sir, I am out there myself personally. My cell phone is posted on the board. If you have any issues with any of our trucks, you, all you have to do is make a phone call to me.
I don't have any issue with the trucks. It's the, it's the damage potentially that would occur from-
Well, we can't, we do, we pay tax to the road, our trucks don't move roads. So, as far as we're concerned, um, we'll take it into consideration, but we get to use those roads.
Well, I'm not denying that. I'm not denying that. I wouldn't mind having the, uh, uh, the, uh-
Because they go down at once. But, but going down at once or going down at a hundred times doesn't change the damage to a, to a road.
Well, I can estimate forty-three from my home.
Okay, one at a time. Um, four seven nine six, you have a comment? Go ahead. I can't, I can't tell who you are, just your phone number. Go ahead.
This is, uh, Leonard Zerlong, two seventy-seven Old Center. I've got a question. With that amount of traffic, are they gonna be using the road that's currently at the bog next to my property? And if so, are they expanding that road or making any changes to it?
I'm not sure which road you're referring to. Mr. Aruda, do you know which road?
It's the private road right on the bogs that are currently there between the bog and the property next to it.
To the left or to the right?
The ground road.
Is that to the left or to the right?
Ground.
The little barn?
Yeah, the farm.
Okay.
We're using-
That property is as far as it was immediately adjacent to the, to the front bog.
Okay, do you know where that is, Mr. Aruda?
Yep, and we're-
Okay, go ahead.
On our plan, we have, we're upgrading that, uh, road, um, so that, to accommodate the trucks going in and out. Um, I always pave in on the entrance, uh, so that we don't break into the, the current road. It, it's not, um, it's not, uh, going to affect her on the left or the right side because we're gonna extend the road out.
Okay, so you're not gonna be cutting down any of the trees that are currently between our property and the bog area or the road?
I don't think there is any trees where we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna extend- We're going to extend into the bog. If you're on the left side of the property...
Yeah, if it comes out where the road turns and there's a bunch of trees, on the plans I saw, it looks like you're going to be cutting down the trees that are between the corral and the bog.
Those trees may have to come down. On the corner there, just for safety purposes, those trees may have to come down. We don't want to cut any more than we have to. If we can save the maple, we'll save the maple, but the scrub stuff, I think, for visibility purposes, we'll have to go.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Battistini.
I do still have a concern with proximity to the burial site. Is it possible for us to have a third party take a look at the plans and see if that's sufficient space?
Can I clarify that? I'm also inclined to make... Perhaps we should have a site visit so we get a better idea?
Can I clarify that?
Yes, go ahead.
We're saying 25... They gave me a marker, and I gave another 25 feet... Where I could have gone up to, I could have gone another 25 feet closer to the cemetery. I had the cemetery, and then I went another 25 feet from where they said I could go to give the respect to the cemetery. We're not 25 feet, and that needs to be clarified. It's not 25 feet from the edge of a coffin, you know, dig in and go. That's not the case. They said the Massachusetts Cemetery and the people that had done the thing, they gave us a layout, and I had the cemetery commissioner out there. And they gave us a layout, and I went 25 feet beyond where they said I could go to to give an area of more protection. And then, I plan on putting a walking path down to the road that doesn't exist now so people could come up, walk through that area when I'm done with the earth removal. I've said this to the neighbors that came out. When I'm... While the earth removal is in progress, I have to have no trespassing signs. When I'm done with that earth removal in three years, there'll be a walking path that'll go up to that cemetery, an area where people could reflect if they'd like, and then the slope starts at that and goes down. I'm not in business to make bad decisions and have the town embarrassed by what we've done. Every farm that I've gone on and done, I think the town has come and seen it and is very proud of the way we've taken care of it. You could talk to the highway superintendent, not blowing our own horn, but this is kind of one of those things that we are in charge of how we perceive to the town. And I think that I've never embarrassed you guys on any earth removal I've ever done, none. I go and I go above and beyond. That's why I took the time to meet with all the neighbors out there on my property, took them, showed them everything. Some of these questions that they had and concerns, I addressed them. They wanted more of an earth berm or a noise protection. I did it. I'm not here to be a bad neighbor. And like I said to them, if they don't want me there, they were up against it, and they wanted to sell it to houses, I was going to not purchase it from Mr. Beaton. But we've chased Mr. Beaton on a few projects because the two of us go hand in hand. Yes, I am a sand and gravel guy. I've made no qualms about that. But I'm proud of what we've accomplished. We've saved, you know... You say you saved houses. Those people on Fuller Street are ecstatic that I'm going to be done there this year, and they'll never have houses. They'll look over that beautiful cranberry bog forever. And the same thing on Tischpiklin Street. I did the ones at the old Corbinan bog. Same thing there. Across the street at Chopchak, I did the farm for the Finch Farm down there. I'm not here to make an eyesore or make a nuisance or to make profit. That material isn't even that great. We're doing it to keep it a viable farm. Mr. Kravitz can't run it when it's not less than at least five acres. So, he's going to put... He's going to... It's centrally located. He's going to put a barn there to store some of his equipment. It makes it beautiful because he purchased the Corbinan farm from me. He will run this farm. He's got several other farms in Middleborough that he runs. So, it's more of kind of keeping a tradition going forward of farming community than making... Everybody thinks we're making so much money on the gravel. That's not the case.
Okay, so my question is to the board. How would you like to proceed? Did you want to close this hearing and make a decision? Did you need more information? Did you want a site visit? Give me some input, please.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So, on the plan I'm looking at, it says 25 feet between the burial ground and where the slope starts for the earth removal. So, is that incorrect?
That is correct. That is correct. It doesn't mean a grave site. It's not a grave site.
I believe we're showing line work, which is indicative of what Mr. Aruda said. He was told he could excavate to those... There's a line with circles. So, I believe that's what he's talking about when he says that he was allowed to excavate to there. And then, we're showing a 25-foot setback beyond that line work.
Okay, so the line with the squares on it, you're saying that's what the...
That's what...
Sorry, said you were allowed to excavate up to.
Yes, sir, I believe so. I wasn't...
Okay, because that just wasn't clear on the plan.
Right, yeah, because there's no fencing in the field of any kind. It's... You get into the area, and you see the old headstones. But, you know, we delineated what we would understand as the limits that you could not encroach inside of that line.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board want to weigh in? What direction? Go ahead, Mr. Jermaine.
I believe Mr. Aruda has answered every question that's come up tonight, including dust, traffic, berm, noise. I believe his intentions are good, and we should move this forward for a vote.
Okay. Any final comments from the audience? I see Mr. Juvenoni. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, the question that I would ask is that if you move ahead with this project tonight with special conditions, could there be a special condition consideration for maybe putting a marker at the... It's kind of a one, two, three... It's like a trapezoidal shape, four-sided shape, that is the burial ground with those... That line with the boxes. If something could be put out there to make sure that they didn't get within 25 feet like they're showing, but also it would delineate it out so it protected a little better, that would be awesome.
Okay. Anyone else from the board?
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I would just like to say that there's a reason that earth removal is not allowed in residential areas. And the reason is, number one, the dislocation it causes, and number two, the ang and the lay of the land and everything else. We don't want all of our land to be right next to the water table. We don't want everything to be flat. And I personally am not afraid of development because if the pilgrims had been that afraid of development, why every single square inch of this country would be taken up with houses, and it's not. So, only so much is going to be developed that way. As far as the question about how long we let these permits go, sometimes they get away, but the way they're structured is they get three years, and then they can go for a one-year extension. And after that, they have to start all over again. And so, the notion is to discourage them to go beyond four years at the very most and to limit the amount of problems that the abutists put up with, and ultimately, to have something that is of value. And as I say, something that legitimately qualifies agriculture. It isn't just an excuse, frankly, to rape the land. And I will say for Mr. Aruda that I haven't heard any particular problem with what he's done before, although I thought, as I said, it was ridiculous, the Fuller Street project relative to the amount of gravel taken out versus the amount of bog that was actually created. This one is on the edge. This one is marginal. It's also sensitive in several ways, and I can't guarantee that people won't be affected. And frankly, removing the overburden of all that gravel. If people have shallow wells, it is conceivable that some of those wells could be affected. If they're artesians, bedrock wells, it's far less likely. But the pressure of all that stuff down on the earth can affect the water table, and the water table doesn't always go in flat. So, the water table can be at the top of the hill and then go down and be at the bottom of the hill. So, just because you have a water table and a reservoir doesn't mean that that's where the water is everywhere in a piece of property. So, sometimes removing the overburden can change things. So, all in all, you know, it's a mixed bag. Allowing these earth removals for agriculture is something that, in a sense, we have to do, but there are strong limitations on when we have to do it. And we only have to do it if the earth removal part of it is accessory, which means less than 50% of the total in terms both of scope and of profitability. And I want to stress that. And there's case law on this. So, I'd say in this one, while I will agree that 255,000 yards isn't necessarily, you know, a tremendous amount, and what you're doing here is rehabilitation, and you are adding some bog to this, it's certainly not the worst project I've ever seen. But I do want to stop the trend. That trend is just to be excavating earth in so-called house lots and at the same time doing very little to advanced agriculture. So, in this particular case, I guess that I won't vote against this one, but it is very close to the line. That's what I want to say.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Rosenfeld.
Go ahead.
This is Easterbrook.
Easterbrook, yes, thank you. How are you?
We do have the original well that came with this house. That's what we're using now. So, you're kind of saying that perhaps we may not have water after this?
Anything's possible, you know. Probably will, but I certainly can't guarantee that taking it off of there won't change them.
Okay. Well, it's had a good 300 years.
Madam Chair, if I may just ask one other question, just for clarification.
Yes?
My interest in dividing the amount of truck traffic, I led to understand that... By the way, I find Mr. Aruda to be very, very forthcoming and easy to talk to. Who would be overseeing that particular component of this project with the...
DPW. DPW.
All right.
Yeah, they will monitor the amount of trucks. That's what they usually do.
Specifically, the direction and also the other thing that my concern is, is the use of brake brakes. I understand that they're very necessary as a safety precaution, but I would ask that they would pay particular attention to, you know, slowing down long before they get to the turnoff, because that can be very, very obtrusive. We hear them, we're probably 500 yards or 300 yards... No, 500 yards from Route 44, and they'll shake our windows.
I'm sure. Mr. Aruda is no stranger to this business or brake brakes, so if you'd like to comment on that, go ahead, Joe.
I have a company policy, which we require every truck driver that works for us to sign this company policy. You do not take brakes that are not necessary on small country backroads. Absolutely not. So, you can tell us... It's an engine brake. It makes loud...
It's a shuddering noise. You hear it probably at your house. It's like duh, 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 duh.
Over there.
Good sound, yes. Good imitation.
I say it, I mean it. Every one of my pits has my cellphone number on. If there's ever a concern, you don't have to call the town. And Chris will verify that. Any issues, I will deal with. I will deal with them myself. If you saw a truck at that break, you would only have to make one phone call to me, and you will see that truck disappear. We have zero tolerance for that. We have had, in the past, we've had guys that have used them. Oh, I forgot, but we send them home for the day, and the next day, they usually repair.
All right, thank you.
You're going to be a...
Yes, go ahead.
Leonard Zerlong, 277 Old Center. With there being 60 to 80 trucks a day going down this dirt road, is there going to be anything done to stop the dust from coming up? Because even now, we get a lot of dust.
There's a dust remediation plan submitted here. Did you want to comment on that, Joe?
It's not going to be a dirt road. It's going to be paved so far.
Doesn't matter.
And then, there'll be a dust remediation over the whole entire project. So, the concern that you have, we will address.
Okay, thank you.
Right, we don't generally approve these without a dust mitigation plan because we know they, you know...
Oh, it's bad.
Sometimes, yeah. Yeah. Final last call. Any comments?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Rosenfeld.
I'd just like to have the order of conditions come before us in a couple of weeks so we can make adjustments to it. And I'd like to ask Chris Pest to do what he can to help us design the phasing of this project because he mentioned that, and maybe he has some idea of how it should be phased.
Okay. So, what I'm going to do then is, if we're not going to approve it tonight until we get this back, we will continue this hearing. We will not close it. But the permit will be put together, just so you know, Joe, subject to the DPWs and the conservation's comments here and conditions. Also, we will probably have in there something concerning recording the permit.
Hundred percent.
Okay? And as Mr. Juvenoni brought up, it might be a good idea just to stake the 25-foot distance for the no disturb on the burial, just so that we are all comfortable with that.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Did I miss anything from the board that we intend to include in this permit?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Demers.
Jermaine.
Jermaine. They sound alike sometimes. Go ahead, Mr. Jermaine.
Just to clarify, if Mr. Aruda records his own deed, no work starts till we have a copy of that?
Yep.
Is that correct?
That is correct. That's helpful.
And maybe in the future, we'll have the process changed so that we record it. I'm not sure. It's still up in the air, so... But it does have to be recorded one way or another, which you're well aware of.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that being said, could I get a motion to continue the hearing? And we'll have the permit all ready to go at that point to... Holleen, tell me.
June 7, 7:40.
June 7?
Yep.
At 7:40. I need a motion from the board to do this, okay? Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Any further comments or questions? All in favor of continuing to June 7 at 7:40? Delphi, yes.
Battistini, yes.
Rosenfeld, yes.
Demers, yes. Jermaine, yes.
Okay, pass it unanimously. So, we'll be back with everything in order at that point, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and hopefully, we answered your questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Town Manager's Report. Mr. News, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just several items on the report, just a few things from the Economic Development Team meeting that I had last week. In regards to the branding proposals for downtown, we interviewed... Over the past month, we interviewed six firms. We based it on master permit law, and we scored each interview. And the highest score was given to Chandler Thanks, and we are in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and they will be meeting with the Downtown Improvement Committee meeting on Friday at 9:00 a.m. and figure soon. And last week, we announced that the business grants for businesses in the community who've done improvements to their businesses, the grants have been increased from $700 to $25,000, and that is based on income. It is a federal program. At the request of the Board of Selectmen last week, I had a meeting with the Building Commissioner, the Planner, the interim Health Officer, the Conservation Agent, the IT Director, the Assistant to the Town Manager, and the Executive Assistant to the Board of Selectmen regarding the building permit process. It was a very good meeting. We talked about the permitting eyes, the online modules. We talked about future capital expense, and most importantly, we discussed the policy that we came to a consensus. And right now, the policy is being circulated amongst the department heads, and as soon as we get a sign off, we'll present that policy to the Board of Selectmen for approval. Now, last week, we had a school building committee meeting. As you know, the students are in the new high school. The demolition of the Baytonville High School, work started last Monday, but the actual demolition will start on May 24, next Monday, and the site substantial completion is targeted for October 21, 2021. We had last week a South Coast Rail Stakeholdings meeting. We talked about the ongoing construction, train waves, traffic buffering, not only South Coast Rail issues, but CSX issues. Rail issues, but CSX issues. We discussed about the construction work scheduled ahead, outages, the traffic management plan. There was inspection by the Conservation Department in terms of design issues. But most importantly, South Coast Rail is going to schedule a meeting with town officials and South Coast Realty, D E P and Nass Coastal in regard to noise generated by both CSX and construction in South Coast Rail. So that is it. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? I'd like to add, 'cause I forgot to add at the beginning, we are going live next week, I believe. We're all set for that, Bob. So Board of Selectmen will be at the Town Hall and you can attend it too. It will not be a hybrid. We should be able to socially distance. That room is big enough, especially with the governor's newer regulations. So next week, the twenty-fourth, we will be live at the Town Hall. Okay, moving on.
Also, Madam Chair?
Yes?
On that, based on the governor's announcement today, effective May twenty-ninth, face coverings will be optional for town employees as well as visitors entering town buildings. Again, that was a decision made by the governor and we're not gonna be asking people if they're vaccinated. Masks, face coverings are optional for both employees and visitors visiting town properties.
To the town buildings, great. Okay. Moving on. Anyone have anything under correspondence? Um, I had one. I just wanted to thank Nancy McCarthy, who visited the Oliver State and how she's been visiting it, I guess, off and on, and how she was very happy to see the work that's being done there, both inside and out. And she just thanks us all for all the work that we do there, the entire town. Thank you. And I do too.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rosenfeld.
Yeah, she particularly pointed out the work done by the gardeners.
Yes.
From Old Point, who transformed the Victorian or whatever they are, colonial gardens and back of the...
Yes.
Yeah, so I did wanna basically point out that she particularly was taken with the changes that have happened in the last several years relative to...
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. She had attended Shakespeare in the garden there a few years ago and she said it's a drastic difference, in a good way. So we're happy to hear that, absolutely. Anyone else have anything under correspondence? Hearing nothing? Could I please get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, so moved in a second to have. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Thank you, everyone. And all in favor, doubt a yes.
Battistini, yes. Rosenfeld, yes. Demers, yes.
Okay, Jermaine, yes. We passage unanimously and I will see you in person next week. Bye.